The time is now six oh one. And I call to order this council workshop meeting on February fifth, two thousand and twenty five. Um, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We'll begin with citizens to be heard. There are no citizens to be heard here. Anybody wishing to be heard online? Okay, there there'll be another opportunity later if need be. Uh, there are no presentations, uh, move on to the meeting minutes. Uh, is there a motion, uh, counsel to review and approve the December fourth, two thousand and twenty four workshop meeting minutes? Motion by the deputy mayor, is there a second? Second, second by councillor Stewie, any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, on to ERCP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have four items this evening. First, I move that council adopt a resolution appointing Mr. Alan Galbraith to a partial term on the Carlisle zoning hearing board. This term will be effective immediately and shall expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty six.
Councillor Mellon makes a motion to appoint Mr. Galbraith to the zoning hearing board, is there a second? Second by councillor Perry, any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Next, I move that council adopt a resolution appointing Mr. Dan Hacker to a full five-year term as an alternate on the Carlisle Borough zoning hearing board. The term will be retroactive to January first, twenty twenty five, and shall expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Councillor Mellon makes a motion for the appointment of Mr. Hacker to the zoning hearing board, is there a second? Second by councillor Perry. Any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Next, I move that council appoint Ms. Wanda Hunter to a partial term as an alternate on the Human Relations Commission. This term will become effective immediately and will expire on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty six.
Councillor Mellon makes a motion to appoint Ms. Hunter to a partial term as an alternate on the Human Relations Commission, is there a second? Second by councillor Perry. Any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for your service, continued service, Wanda.
Okay, and last, I move that council reappoint Mr. Thomas Easterly to a second term on the Borough's Historical Architectural Review Board, effective retroactively January first, twenty twenty five, and expiring on December thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Councillor Mellon makes a motion to reappoint Mr. Easterly to a second term on the Borough's Historical Architectural Review Board, is there a second? Second by councillor Perry, any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Uh, public works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have two items this evening. First, I move that Borough Council award the bid for the purchase of hydrated lime used at the Carlisle Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants, for which the lowest responsive bidder is outlined in the bid tabulation. The contract term shall be from March first, two thousand and twenty five, to December thirty first, two thousand and twenty five. And furthermore, that Borough Council authorize staff to purchase potassium chloride, for which no bids were received for two consecutive bidding periods from staff's vendor of choice for an amount not to cause an existence of budget allotment for wastewater treatment plant chemicals for two thousand and twenty five.
Councillor Stewie makes a motion to award the bid for purchase of hydrated lime to the lowest responsive bidder, and to authorize staff to purchase potassium chloride. Is there a second? Second by councillor Stiles, is there any discussion? Hearing, hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Finally, I move that Borough Council adopt a resolution entering into an intergovernmental cooperation, cooperation agreement with the following municipalities, North Middleton, South Middleton, Middlesex Townships, and the Borough of Shippensburg, for the purposes of procuring the services of a third-party contractor for the processing, grinding, and disposal of way, yard waste for each participating municipality, and to jointly solicit and accept bids for these services with a contract for said services to the lowest responsive bidder.
Councillor Stewie makes a motion to adopt a resolution entering into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with North Middleton, South Middleton, and Middlesex Townships, Hanover, Shippensburg, to procure a third-party contractor for the processing and disposal of yard waste. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Shiles. Any, any discussion? Hearing none or call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. That concludes my report. Thank you. Sustainable, sustainable community and economic quality.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have a staff briefing on the Cherry Street Urban Mixed Use zoning amendment.
Uh, it'll be super brief, and we also have Hubert Gilroy who's, um, representing the applicant for this. Uh, staff, um, uh, provided some guidance at the last planning commission meeting, meeting for proposed rezoning at the end of Cherry Street, uh, from a residential district, high-density residential to urban mixed use. The lot is surrounded by urban mixed on the east side. There's actually three different lots on Cherry Street that are currently urban mixed, and they're all, you know, former brownfield sites. The subject lot is currently for sale, uh, so the applicant is hoping to purchase, um, the lot. And they've met with staff several times. We explained to them that the purpose of urban mixed use is to provide a variety of land use activities and, you know, try to, uh, connect the grid consistent with the urban redevelopment plan and some of the other, uh, planning documents that we have. We'll put together a memo for your next meeting, uh, at the applicant's request to set a public hearing or direct the solicitor to, uh, set a public hearing and, and draft and advertise the zoning map amendment change.
Any, any questions on that?
What is the intersection here, Cherry and?
Lincoln.
Lincoln, thank you.
Attorney Gilroy, do you have anything you want to offer? Um, we do, since we have, we have somebody online, yeah.
Sorry. Hubert Gilroy for the applicant, we filed this zone change request. This property, uh, is owned by Jim Kravitz, who bought it over ten years ago. And there's a plan approved back then for just, uh, residential use. Probably about sixty or eighty units. Yeah, and, uh, it went nowhere. Uh, so, uh, now we have it under an agreement with the, uh, OZ Fund, I call it the Oz Fund. Uh, Jeremy Finkins, he's out of Lancaster, he's developed a very nice, uh, residential, uh, for, not low-income housing, but for workers, uh, mid-level workers' housing, but he's also planning some mixed use with this. And as, uh, Jared said, uh, we've met with the staff more than the staff wants to meet with us anymore. And we're taking a lot of their suggestions. They've even gone over to meet with the school district because they're thinking of maybe a counseling uh, office there. Uh, school district seems encouraged, so they're, they're doing their, their legwork and making sure they're touching base with all the constituencies. Jared, I think going to hope that your next meeting, that you, uh, approve of the advertisement and schedule a public hearing. I won't be here next Thursday, so I'm here tonight in case there's any questions, just so we can keep it moving. I think, uh, county plannings reviewed it, they gave the okay, and we appeared before the Borough Planning Commission, and they gave, uh, thumbs up also.
Any, any questions for Attorney Gilroy?
Um, I, I just, I have a couple of comments just regarding kind of being looked over the plans. I mean, I, I really like the sort of the density in the, in these plans that I've seen, the, um, you know, we need more housing. Um, I mean, that's a national issue. You know, I think, uh, I, I sort of still kind of question a little bit of the, the sort of amount of parking, and I know this is, the, the, you know, maybe looking at a rendering of the building will like change my opinion of that, but, um, it still seems kind of like a lot of parking space to me, um, and, um, I guess, uh, my other concern is, I, I live on Louther Street, so, um, the sort of intersection of Louther and Cherry is, it's not, it's not a super highly trafficked intersection at this point. Um, but, um, you know, the, this is sort of like, uh, I get, my concern is sort of like if this were to, if we were eventually to develop the property on the other side of this, um, this sort of amount of traffic that would start coming through on Cherry Street. There's an, there's an immense number of students that cross at, um, Louther and Cherry Street because they're going to either Goodyear or Kaufman or the Klein Center or their dormitories. Uh, so it's, I mean, it's, there's far more pedestrians at that intersection than there are cars, um, because of the students. Um, and I cross that intersection too all the time, so I think, um, there, there's a little bit of a concern. And it's like kind of a really bad intersection, it's like not, um, it's fine right now because there's like low-traffic volumes there, um, but, uh, you know, it's, it's sort of the same where it's like, because the railroad runs right through there, it's like a pretty like, you know, there's like, um, it's, it's a very awkward intersection, um, and, uh, you know, I'm sure, uh, that I, I'd have similar concerns about North and Cherry and Penn and Cherry, but, um, to me, that's the one I encounter the most, that's sort of like why, um, you know, why make that observation? But I, I, I like the fact that, you know, there's discussion of having, um, you know, commercial space on the bottom floor for medical offices, et cetera. I mean, that's, uh, really, really great, so I think that's really all my concerns. Also, if we were to ever consider extending Cherry Street all the way through to, um, B Street would be kind of like, I know that's not, that didn't seem to be in the plan, but there would be quite a bit more traffic kind of coming. A lot of people go down to Franklin Street now, um, and drop down there for a college, and I worry a little bit that, you know, the traffic that would come down there, so.
If, if, if I can comment a little bit on that.
Sure, yeah.
The sketch plan was submitted because we're required to give you something to look at. But realistically, with every rezoning, um, we don't have the plan yet. And, uh, my client's going to submit something consistent with that plan, or they're going to get a different lawyer because we don't want to be, you know, showing you one thing and coming in with something different. But we have to do the survey, and we're going to be back before you with the land development plan, and a lot of those issues will be addressed. And staff's already, uh, addressed with us some of these traffic concerns and how the road weighed. That was the last meeting, that was the focus kind of at the last meeting, so we'll be looking at all of those things in development. But you're going to see more of a fine-tooth comb plan once we, uh, but we can't do anything until we get a result.
Jared, I forget under our ordinance, will, will traffic impact be required on, on land development?
Um, we, we do have to look at, we do have to look at traffic for the land development, and there is, um, one little standard for the, uh, rezoning where they have to look at, you know, safety and congestion. But as, uh, Attorney Gilroy said, it's, it's at a fairly high level at this point. We, we get another chance to look at it when the actual development comes in.
And when we look at traffic, that is, um, that is, uh, vehicular traffic, or we are also looking at pedestrian traffic? Because, I mean, that, directly right there, Penn and, and Cherry is such a high, uh, high school, even middle school, walking, traffic, biking, scooters. So, um, so when, when that's looked at, is it really just looking at numbers of cars?
I, I agree the ordinance to sort of focus on trip generation for, for cars, but I don't think the, the council would be sort of limited to looking at, you know, other modes if, if they want to. But I, I believe the standard is really focused on car, car gen, trip generation.
Because I think, I, I, I do think that that's an important criteria to evaluate because it's not just how many cars, it's the possibility of, um, vulnerable folks being, um, hit by them. Uh, so in these areas, um, that this is less about you and more about us, but, uh, of finding ways that we can make sure that, um, we have a sound understanding or expectation of, you know, what could possibly happen in those areas and other thing, interventions that we might put in place, um, to make it as safe as possible.
So, I'll, I'll try to describe some of that stuff to tee up the next, um, the next, um, you know, either the land development or the, or the issue of sort of right-of-way and accepting different road, road facilities. But I, I will sort of point out, um, since it's been talked about a little bit, the end of Cherry, um, and the right-of-way width, it, it, it's, it's not what you'd expect, it's not the same width as the rest of Cherry. Uh, so we will have to at least ask the, um, developer to consider, you know, how, how we would, you know, get a, you know, Cherry Street through the property with a proper right-of-way width and sort of what that facility looks like. Um, and again, I'll, I'll try to sort of mention some of the, uh, variable widths that, that we're going to be, uh, looking at. And again, it's not a given that council has to accept, um, a street, but, um, again, this ur- urban mixed use and some of the planning documents, from a staff perspective, it does advise reconnecting the grid, reconnecting streets, so that's where we're focused, but I, I think all these things sort of come out during the review process.
I'll also point out that it, it's currently, uh, R three high-density. So, this rezoning is not creating any of these issues we're discussing about. They're there right now, uh, and if, and if it just got developed as a matter of right without any rezoning, these issues would be, would be there again also. Uh, but I, frankly, I think you got a good developer who's, and I think staff will suggest that, you know, he's listening. We're trying to, uh, accommodate, uh, concerns that the borough would have. And, you know, that's why I'm here tonight, so I can take back all these comments, uh, to my client and let him know that that's what we're going to be seeing. When we have a public hearing, which is what, what you'll do if you advertise the ordinance, we'll have a public hearing, and you'll get a little bit more of a song and dance from us, the engineer rather than a lawyer talk.
I know the other just comment, since you're taking it back to the developer, is, um, uh, the other urban mixed-use location that has workforce housing, um, was the Pearl site. Uh, and the commercial element has not really, although there are some elements within like the housing development with like, um, communal, community kind of spaces that do get deemed under, um, some of the other, uh, mixed-use options. Um, it never, there's still a parcel that's still not developed. And, and the, the developer that did that, um, the housing's great, they're my neighbors across the street. Uh, but the, um, they did that, they did housing, and that's what their, their go-to was. And I think that there was a disconnect when trying to get that other parcel redeveloped as, uh, um, commercial or some other element. So, um, just taking that as, I know you said about maybe counseling something with the, um, high school, and I think that conversations have started, but definitely, uh, engaging with the community to see what, you know, would, would be, um, interesting there and, uh, and, um, finding some other supports for outreach for, you know, connecting with organizations, companies.
Well, that, my client's talking about all that, uh, I represented Pearl when they went in. They didn't talk about that, okay? They talked about housing, and I was wondering if there's a grocery store ever going to go in there, even though they left the site for one. But, uh, uh, I think the, uh, the sustainability of this project financially requires, uh, th- these mixed uses. So, they wouldn't be overtalking to the school district already without anticipating something that's going to be able to work with the school district on.
I'll just say, I'm, I'm very appreciative of anyone who's willing to build additional housing in Carlisle, so, thanks.
Any other comments, questions?
Um, I, I guess I, I did want to just bring up one more thing, and this has more to do with, um, I know land use. There's been kind of buzz about, uh, talking about bicycle, uh, parking. Um, and, uh, there's, uh, uh, I don't know if we've looked at, um, there's a kind of really nice guide, uh, from the Association of Pedestrian Bicycle Professionals, uh, and I can share that with you, Jared. You know, I, I personally, I would, I think it would be great if we like considered some sort of like thing where we could have really high-quality bicycle parking in lieu of like cart parking or something like that. That's, that's my own comment. Oh, and, and I guess the other thing, and I, I mentioned this to Jared, but, um, it would be fantastic if there was a way to connect, um, First Street, um, with some sort of pedestrian, um, uh, connection to, to, so, just because there's a lot of kind of like dead ends in that area, and, um, yeah, it's kind of difficult for kids to kind of navigate that. Uh, there's a desire path already through First Street to the, um, high school grounds, so, uh, but, yeah, no. Thank, thank you for, uh, I'm glad this property is being looked at for redevelopment because it, it's just kind of sitting empty right now, and, um, yeah.
I will have to give my client in a memo as to the issues that came up. Which is very, which is very good, we might as well hear this before we start putting the land development plan together because it'll help us and working with staff too.
Um, could you just clarify, I'm not sure if you have this information, but how many units would be available in that location?
They, let's see, they had sixty-four, uh, units, forty-eight units, uh, mid-rise, and second building with sixty-four, but that, they suggested a daycare and a medical office or some office facility.
So sixty-four units, that's quite a large building.
Yeah, sixty-four and forty-eight, yeah, they're.
How many stories do you anticipate?
Three stories, they're anticipating.
Two separate buildings, three stories each.
But again, we haven't engineered that yet, th- this is just the sketch plan they put together. And like I said, uh, our engineer hasn't even surveyed the property yet, so we, we've got to see what's going to happen there.
And are these primarily, and you probably don't have this information, um, readily available, but they're going to be primarily, I would love to know the mixture of like one-bedroom units, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom units.
My understanding is one or two, and my client used the term, Jared, you might know it, what did he use it? It's, it's not low-income housing, he, it's the worker housing or something to that effect. I apologize, I don't have that term.
Work, workforce.
Workforce, that's right.
So like average rent being twenty-one hundred dollars, or what are we looking at here?
Uh, is Jeremy going to come to the next meeting? Is he going to be here Thursday?
Next Thursday? I don't believe so, no.
So Jeremy with the OZ Fund, he gives a nice rundown of what they're trying to target for, um, rents and, you know, how they sort of manage their capital stack and all these different things. And he's given us a nice presentation a couple of times, but I'll, I'll be honest, I can't, I can't remember all these different details. I could try to go back to my notes and give you some sense of what we've heard before. But, uh, you know, I'll just sort of reiterate, the zoning enables these things to happen. Um, you know, we, we, we don't have the conversation about an actual land development un- until it gets presented. So even if we try to flesh these things out tonight, there's no guarantee that you'll actually get it. All we're trying to set up tonight is, um, you know, the council's ability to act on a zoning change. Um, once they submit, then they'll have to sort of meet the requirements of that new zoning. Uh, but, but that doesn't happen until they submit.
And, and a lot of the public hearing, you'll have, hear some of this, but as Jared said, you know, uh, I've done rezonings, and I have to, to tell people that you could rezone it, and my client could go away. Uh, and somebody else could be coming in here. So once you rezone it, it's rezoned. I'm not saying that to shoot my client in the foot because the youth could go on there by right, right now, but I think we have a serious developer that's prepared the work and, uh, under this rezoning concept.
Uh, yeah, I'm just curious that like, the, I'm happy to consider rezoning it, and I think that's a great idea. I just also want to make sure that then what is built is accessible to the people that are going to want to purchase that product. And that housing has been very expensive in Carlisle, and that some of the feedback that I've heard from the apartment building over at Fairgrounds is that some of those units are out of people's reach. And so I was just curious about making sure that when we rezone it, that the clientele of people that are going to then be able to use that product are able to use that product. So, this is my question.
And I'm hoping just next Thursday you just approve the advertisement and schedule a public hearing.
Right, there, there will be further details when we get to the hearing, and there will be a presentation at that point. And, and I was about to say, Attorney Gilroy stole my thunder, I mean, the same thing I tell my clients in these situations is, you, you zone as if you're making a policy decision on that, that zoning regardless of who's in front of you at that point. Um, because as, as you said, although I'm sure your client's going to follow through, um, but there's always a possibility that that doesn't happen, and then you have that in your zoning ordinance, and, and you have to live with that for a period of time, whatever plan may come in until you would have meant that.
Well, you've been living with high-density for ten years and nothing's happened.
That's, that's right. Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Uh, there is no new business, is?
Wait, can I have a new business?
Oh, sure.
I mean, I know that we have our reports next week, um, and I did send an email, and this was just a very brief thing. Um, but, uh, I think, um, there's a whole lot of, uh, people in our community, in our country that are struggling right now with knowing what to do, um, including myself, um, and us as, uh, an elected body up here. Um, I am not a great, uh, policy creator when it comes to writing things out, but, um, I am open to listening to the public, to, um, some people that are smarter than myself, places that have, uh, taken the initiative to take on some of this. I mean, even tonight, um, under ERCP, you know, we have our Human Relations, um, Commission, and I'm grateful that that work was done um, years ago, so it's now a foundation of what we have here. Uh, but sort of evaluating things that, uh, maybe we have taken for granted, um, that the state, you know, gives, uh, support on, but is, or is there importance that we reiterate things on the local level to ensure that Carlisle is seen as a place that's supportive of, um, any number of different policies, uh, different folks of all walks. Um, and so I'm, I don't have a particular ask tonight other than for myself personally. When we do have our, um, reports going forward, I might, I might use it a little bit more to speak about things that are happening in the greater world outside of Carlisle, but trying to look through a Carlisle lens and if there's ways that we can, um, address directly our state, uh, elected officials, to ask them to be the voice. Uh, we can all do that individually, but I do think our collective voice has weakened. Um, and like I said, if there's policies, um, that we can reiterate in, uh, formal ways, um, even though there might be, uh, things at upper levels, but right now some of those things are crumbling. So I, that's why I'm not a policy expert, and I am going to try to lean on you folks. And, um, but we do lean on, on our staff a lot for a lot of the, um, other types of things, but I think that some of, like this, this type of work is something that I think that we have to lead, uh, and I'm at least going to bring things up and see, you know, if other people are on board for anything, and I'm, I'm welcoming other people's perspectives and what they want to bring and what they care about and what they're hearing other people care about. So that's just what I wanted to say tonight, um, I don't have any specific ask, but I, I'm opening the door to conversations here at the meetings with residents that have concerns, um, and just to know that I'm going to do my best, and I think that we're collectively, um, here to do what we can, even though we're small potatoes, kind of compared to everybody else.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any public comment? Does Ms. Wanda, she's never hand up? Oh, she got, she, she got it, she got it pointed and she took off. Thank you.
I do have some sort of, um, comments that I've kind of written down that I'd like to share just, just regarding, um, um, what's been going on with, uh, Department of Homeland Security. You know, I, I, and I, I've had borough residents reach out to me already about this. Um, they're concerned about friends of theirs, um, I'm concerned about friends of mine. Uh, and just sort of how, um, I, I, I guess I would really kind of welcome any sort of meeting or discussion with, um, uh, the police, just to sort of like understand, um, what our process is for, um, the people who are undocumented, for people who are here on visas. Um, and, you know, the federal government also sort of controls those visas, and so, um, you know, there are a lot of people here who are here illegally right now who could suddenly find themselves in a situation where they are not. Um, and, uh, I guess, uh, I, you know, I just sort of want to get a sense of where, what we are trying to do, um, as a, uh, municipality to sort of like make sure our residents feel safe here. And, um, I know Allentown just proposed a welcoming city ordinance, and that might be a little bit too much for us to take on, um, um, but I, you know, I think we can learn from that. I know that's also being sort of pushed in Bethlehem now as well. Um, so, yeah, I think I just would, I'd be really welcome to sort of any further discussion about this and try to understand because there is sort of a, a, I think, a level of urgency here since things are moving so quickly.
Yeah, I think we can certainly have that, have those conversations. I, I think that, that, I suppose a good thing, I think right now, as I understand our general orders, um, we don't have any requirement that we're reporting that, um, to, to Homeland Security. I think the only requirement in our general orders is, uh, that if, if a foreign national is arrested, and Chief, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, um, the reporting is only to that foreign nationals' consular office. Um, what happens once that person's arrested and maybe taken to prison, and the sheriff's department then has jurisdiction over that, that person, um, and what? Um and what they do, whether they've been, I I know there's a section of the of federal statute that allows. Um homeland security to deputi- deputize local law enforcement agencies. When they have custody of an individual in prison, um and then to in some way cooperate with with. The poten- potential deportation of of that individual, um that's not our role. Um and that's never going to be our our role in that case because we're, we don't have custody of that person in prison and Chief, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that one.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Just so you know, your borough manager is already ahead of you and discussing this with me. The reality is that like our general orders that that speak about uh foreign nationals, it's really geared toward. The war college and people who have that would be there for that, it is not geared toward immigration. Immigration laws are federal. We don't have that jurisdiction and and, you know, whatever you'd like to sit down and and talk about it, you know, for us. It's just a matter of if they're arrested, they will be taken and processed into prison and what they do, we don't call. Federal immigration, we don't, we don't know that, that's not what we do.
I guess I'm I'm curious like has uh Immigration and Customs Enforcement ever reached out to the police to to our. Um police force for the um with with their own warrants.
They certainly can, but that has not happened in the eight years I've been here, um and what usually happens is they come and they do what they they're going to do. Um if they were not uniformed and they needed a uniform presence, the uniform officer would be there, but you know. They, that's not normally where they operate, it is not, it is not not at all and. Just like any other law enforcement officer, if they needed help, if it was a bad situation and they need the help. We'd be obligated to help that bad situation, it's like they would do for us. We've had multiple times at the US Marshals, the FBI has assisted us. But um it it there is no, and with what you were talking about earlier was just MOU between ICE. And local governments and most of those don't exist in this region.
Right, and we can maybe queue this up for a future, future workshop if we wanna have um more discussion on it. There are any, uh there was no new business on the agenda, but there there keeps popping up.
No, I just wanted to say that I think that it is important that um we allow residents to have those conversations with us. Um there's a lot of nonprofits here in Carlisle, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that a lot of people. Are are going to be affected by and um it is important that they know that we are here for them. Um reading your your email today and what you wrote, yes, I I have to agree with you, I think. Again, just making sure that our residents know that, you know, they elected us for a reason and we are here for them. And that they should feel, that they feel that they can come to us or that we're at least being um transparent with them. You know, about whatever the situation, but them feeling like they can count on us, even if it's. Something that we don't have any control over, they know that we're at least supporting them and we're standing behind them, so. I do agree that if we can, I don't know what it looks like, but um so yeah, we have some kind of conversation and figure out. What it can look like, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, we'll have further discussion on it, um any other new business? Alright, um I do need to announce that we'll have an executive session um af- after this this meeting on uh acquisition of real estate. Uh from which we will not be coming back into session for any votes. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.